Okay, thank you all for coming tonight. I want to call to order the Clayton City Council meeting of September 15th. Indicate for the record that we do have a quorum. We are missing C W and Jim. And the first order of business, and I suspect where they are, is over at our closed session, which is the purpose is a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation per government code section 54956.91. And the plaintiff is Clayton for Responsible Development versus the city of Clayton, and it is Contra Costa Superior case number N 20-0543. The second item under our closed session is a conference with our labor negotiator per government code section 54957.6. And this is the agency designated labor negotiator, our interim city manager, with regards to our employee organization miscellaneous city employees and our police officers association. So we, with all those things named, we are now going into closed session, and we will be back here at this meeting when we are done. We will leave the meeting and come back afterwards. So we'll see you in just a bit.
Bye.
Okay, thank you all. I'm sorry we're a little late getting back from our closed session. We got through part of our closed session, but not all of it. So we will be going back into closed session at the conclusion of this open meeting. But we went through the first part of our meeting concerning existing litigation, and we have no reportable action from that. So now we are convening back in open session. We will call the meeting to order and ask Janet, would you please call the roll? Absolutely. Councilmember Catalano?
Here.
Councilmember Diaz?
Present.
Councilmember Wolf?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wong?
Here.
Mayor Pierce?
Here.
Thank you. And before we go to the pledge of allegiance, I just want to make a couple of announcements. You're all pretty used to this by now, but we do have a larger than usual crowd of attendees. So just let me make the announcements that due to COVID-19, we are holding this meeting as a Zoom webinar pursuant to the provisions of the governor's executive order N-29-20, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act. This meeting is being webcast on our city's website. And I will call on council members, presenters, staffs, and other speakers by name and ask that they speak clearly and restate their names before giving comments or remarks so that members who can only hear can tell who's talking. All of us are participating via webcast and Zoom, and most of us as panelists have our cameras enabled, so we are reminded that our activities are visible to viewers. Others who are here as attendees, our members of the public, should use the raise hand feature of Zoom or dial star nine if you want to comment on anything at the appropriate time. I will ask public speakers to restate their names and organizations, but providing such information is voluntary. Written public comments received before this meeting will be entered into the record but will not be read out loud. So if there are some of those folks who submitted written comments that want to have those included in the video record, they may raise their hand under public comment, and I will call on them, and they can make those statements in their time there. A roll call vote will be taken for all action items. And the other thing is that we do not have an active chat in this one, which is a good thing. So in order to get the full Zoom experience, please make sure your application is up to date, and that does make a difference. So, thank you all. Now with that, I'm going to ask Jim to say the pledge of allegiance, and the rest of us please mute so that we don't get a garbage.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. The next item on the agenda tonight is our consent calendar. These are typically routine items in nature, and they're generally considered for approval at one time. Are there any of these items that someone wishes to pull for separate discussion?
I'd like to pull item D.
Okay, item D is about the LEAP grant. Is there anything anyone else wishes to pull for separate discussion? If not, do I have a motion on the balance of the consent calendar?
Moved. Jim Diaz.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion by Diaz, a second by Catalano to approve items A, B, C, E, and F. All in favor, please say aye when Janet calls your name. Member Catalano?
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wong?
Aye.
And Mayor Pierce?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so Jeff, you asked to pull item D regarding the LEAP grants. What were your concerns?
So when I look at the grand doc, there's a list of eligible activities. I believe it starts on the document page four under section seven. I would be, I think this is a great grant to be used to augment the costs that we're going to be spending to prepare the housing element. On this document, they list 20 eligible activities. I'm trying to read real quick if it's inclusive. No, it's not inclusive. Okay, so it's not limited to. But you know, it does describe a number of those. I would, I would want to give direction that we utilize these funds solely for item 13. Item 13 reads, "Preparing and adopting housing elements of the general plan that include implementation component to facilitate compliance with the six-cycle RENA." I think that's the best use of these funds. And all of the other items, I don't want to use the money for.
So, does anybody have any problem with that? That's what I assumed we were using it for. That's what staff indicated we would use it for.
But, so my question, are some of those other items potentially implementation measures in order to have a compliant housing element?
Realistically, we're not going to get a housing element done for $65,000 anyway, so implementation's going to be after we get it done. We're only getting 65 grand. There's no way we're going to get a housing element done for less than that.
So if we could.
Close at 200.
So if we agreed that the grant funding would be solely used for item 13 and the eligible activities, then I would move approval.
Second.
Can I just ask, is staff okay with that? I'd like to hear from our community development director, just to make sure. I mean, it sounds like we're going to spend more than $65,000 on the housing element, but I don't want to leave any money on the table either. So can I just have staff comment that they're okay with that?
Matthew?
Matthew Pesky, Community Development Director, Madam Mayor, Council. Yes, staff is in total agreement with this. This is the item that we selected from the grant information, the eligible items, and this, we also felt was the best use of the potential $65,000.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good.
Okay, if there are no other questions, Janet, would you call the roll on item D with the stipulation that the $65,000 grant will be used exclusively for the six-cycle housing element? Or, Councilmember Catalano?
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wong?
Aye.
Mayor Pierce?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is recognitions and presentations. We have none for this evening's meeting. The next item after that is reports. We have a planning commission report. And who is presenting?
Looks like Matthew.
Matthew's presenting, okay.
Matthew Pesky, Community Development Director, Secretary of the Planning Commission. So the planning commission did hold a meeting on September 8th. They selected a new chair, A.J. Chappero is our new planning commission chair, and our vice chair is Terry Denzilow. So congratulations to them. They will be leading the year forward. And the next planning commission meeting is on the September 22nd date. It's their regular meeting, and they will discuss appointing members to the land use subcommittee and approving minutes. At the meeting after that is the first public hearing that they will have heard at some time, so that that will be coming forward in the near future.
Okay. Any questions for Matthew about planning commission meetings? Seeing none, we will go, there was no Trails and Landscape Committee, city manager and staff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. Just two items of interest for the public this evening. If the community members haven't noticed yet, we have a new election ballot box installed in front of the Clayton Community Library, so you will have easy drive-up access, social distancing ways to turn in your mail-in ballot. If you choose not to actually mail it in, you have a drop-off center. The county is, is highly recommending that you use your voting by ballot method this year due to the pandemic. And they did put on their website that about 72% of the county was already registered to vote by mail. And so the expansion is actually less than what we already had, actually actively voting by mail. So please enjoy that convenience, and we're excited to be a part of that process. And then lastly, there are 15 days left for you to complete the 2020 census. It's a really important process for us from funding perspective for schools and services. So I would encourage any community members that have not participated yet. There are several ways to participate, by phone, email, and website. So if you check it out on the 2020census.com, you can find all the information there. Thank you.
Very good. Tuya?
Good question for city manager. So the ballot box that is in front of the library, do you know how frequently the county will be emptying that and retrieving the ballots?
I don't know that, but.
It will be daily.
The clerks, you might know.
It is going to be daily, and there will be a team of two, at least two, emptying every single one of the 36 or seven in the county daily.
Thank you, Mayor.
That was in one of those multiple things that we got from the county elections office.
Mayor?
Yes.
Where are we in, in, in the census? Are we beating Piedmont yet?
We're still trailing them by a bit, but we're still number two in the state.
So you're going to have to go to Piedmont and work the chicken farm or something, right?
I guess. I don't know. I don't know. So I don't think.
Come on, Clayton, we can do it. We can do it.
Yep, so, anyway, that's where we are. Any other questions of our interim city manager? No? All right, then we'll go to city council reports. Jeff?
Yeah, I primarily did a lot of communication this week with our residents. I think follow-up around some of the engineering work that has been going on with our streets. I think that we just approved the cross-jurisdictional negotiation agreement, so that could be, that could be interesting. I'm curious to see how that works. And then just a lot of email and follow-up for folks that had questions.
Okay, C W?
Did a lot of email as well and some phone calls as well. And attended, as a citizen, attended the Clayton Speaks webinar with some fabulous kids who ran the thing. And by kids, they're, they're young adults. You know, they could have been seven. They were just so articulate and amazing. And so I encourage anybody to give that a look on YouTube if you get a chance to the Clayton Speaks webinar. I had a meeting with Councilmember Catalano regarding our upcoming ad hoc safety committee, and she's going to talk about that. And I think that is all.
Okay, Tuya?
So similarly to C W, I also participated or attended the Clayton Speaks Race Relations Dialogue, Part Three, which was excellent. And then on the Public Safety Committee, so C W and I worked on the next agenda. So we don't have an exact date yet, but we're putting together the agenda right now, and we will have a meeting date soon.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
Thank you. Moving along with the Morgan Territory as an advisor, they're moving along. They've finally got themselves a set of bylaws and employee identification number. And that's moving along very well. And the residents out there are very pleased with our participation and advice. Also on the second attended in-person, believe it or not, the Contra Costa Water District Board meeting, very quick. They just had a few minor items that they had to attend to. And I'll be attending again, I think tomorrow night. They have a special meeting that I'll be going on. But again, they are doing an in-person meeting simply because they have a quite large auditorium-type facility that they meet in. Let's see. Then I attended on, on the Zoom, the mayor's conference. And that was interesting. It was one of the first meetings, and I'll let the mayor finish and go through with more detail, but it was the opening of the discussion on how law enforcement, non-law enforcement can respond to public health-type calls as opposed to sending the police out first or the sheriff out first. And they're working on a process with the cities. And I think the lead on that was the city of Walnut Creek. And I'll let the mayor continue and discuss anything else they may have wished to offer. I would like to compliment all my fellow councilmembers today. Happens to be the beginning of Hispanic Heritage Month. And I want to say, first of all, as the founding chair of the Hispanity Community Foundation a number of years ago, this is the first time Clayton has actually represented and recognized the Hispanic community in Clayton. And by the way, looking at the last census, excuse me, census, speaking of the census and trying to get more up-to-dated information on that, Clayton, by the way, has nearly 11% Hispanic. It's the single largest minority group in our, in our community. And it's the first time we've actually recognized that group, and it's growing. And I work very closely with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce out of San Francisco and the Hispanic Community Foundation on this item, and they are very pleased with the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I, I did attend the mayor's conference. Jim summarized that very well. It's an ongoing discussion countywide and probably nationwide on, on how we can better coordinate social services and other mental health services with the work that our police officers do to help keep the entire public safe. So that's, that's an ongoing discussion. Also had an administrative and planning committee meeting at the Contra Costa Transportation Authority, attended a housing methodology committee on behalf of ABAG and Contra Costa, working on what the eventual allocations for RENA will be and what the methodology will be. We had a follow-up meeting on that meeting at the Regional Planning Committee to explain all of that. And then the next day at the Metropolitan Transportation Committee and the Association of Bay Area Governments joint meeting to go over the same information yet again. I am working very closely with other jurisdictions in Contra Costa to make presentations to both the Housing Methodology Committee and to the next meeting of the Association of Bay Area Governments, as well as the meeting of ABAG in October. So we are planning some speakers and some talking points, and we've been meeting on that virtually daily. So it's coming along. We'll see how we do. There's, there's nothing to report yet because it's still in flux. So far, we have studied about 22 various scenarios. And we're trying to winnow that down at our meeting on Friday, which will be a four-hour meeting. So I will keep you posted once we have something a little more solid to report. So there is that. And that brings us to public comment. And at this time, I would like, Janet, I'm going to ask you to help me, and hopefully you have it in front of you because I've misplaced this piece of paper you gave me. Would we call on any of our candidates first? Our candidates for Clayton City Council? I'd like to call on any of them who might like to speak, to speak first. If they would please raise their hands, and Janet will take you in the next order that you are on the, on the ballot. And we started with number two last time. I think we start with whoever's number three this time. Janet, would you do that? She's looking for her piece of paper, too. I buried it over here somewhere. Nope, that's not it.
Found it, and I just promoted Mr. Miller to be a panel speaker.
Okay, is he the first one?
Speaker.
Okay.
Then.
I'm going to be followed by Jim.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Glenn. You're on. Three minutes.
Good evening, fellow Claytonites. Tonight, I wanted to take my three minutes to remind you why I'm running for the city council. First, I want to address what seems to be the predominant topic, that being the 81-unit three-story Olivia project and the supposed inevitability of high-density housing coming to Clayton. Just to be clear, I'm against both. The contrast. The contrast amongst the candidates is clear. Two candidates, one of each on this council and planning commission are on record having voted in favor, and two candidates voted, I believe rightly, against the project. As I have stated, I believe from the outset there were alternatives, such as the planned development similar to the Mitchell Creek Place multi-unit project just west of Dever Hall. That should have been considered for these downtown properties. Some have claimed they voted for the project without bias or agenda, but the evidence, the history, and the circumstances into which the project was pushed through simply does not support that argument. Some have also said they voted reluctantly because it was the best solution to protect Clayton. Well, if that was true, and their capacity as approvers, why was there no consideration given to, and conditions applied to the developer's responsibility to address the public safety that undergrounding the high-voltage lines on Marsh Creek Road would have accomplished? Also, there was little or no consideration on the conditions applied to address various impacts on the community's appearance, its character, parking, and all of the community service that an 81-unit project will, will bring as an impact, impacts to our police, our parks, both downtown and community, the parking and more, and a more fair and balanced approach to landscape maintenance districts and other assessments of districts. Just think of it this way, folks. Next time you look at your property tax and assessment bills, each year, this project of 81 units will not be required to pay 81 times the single-family residential rate that you and I pay each year. And yet, if the resident, and yet if this project proceeds, those residents will enjoy these improvements and the services. How is that looking out for us? This brings me to my final, and to me, the most important reason I've decided to run. Far too long, our council members have taken us for granted. They collect our taxes and assessments, fees, claim the work has been done, or rely on deceptive assurances from staff that the work was done, or worse yet, allowed feeble excuses as to why the service or the scope of work has not been performed. For example, I talked briefly last time about my 10-year saga on the jihad services that were neglected. And had it not been for the interim city manager and Jeff Wong, I would have, they would, they would gladly taken staff's sides and had, had been ready to approve the next year's fee collection. However, we did have a site meeting. I was proven correct. Time does not permit me to fully recount another similar experience I've just found of neglect since deciding to run, but I will bring that up later. Sadly, this has been the norm and not the exception for many years. And to make matters worse, there has been a constant sloshing of excess funds left over to the general fund without establishing, in my opinion, a much-needed reserve account for each of these assessment districts. I want to challenge this culture of neglect and excuses, and that is the main reason I am running. I am all about making sure you get what's due when you pay your taxes, your assessments, and your fees. Since the time permits, I have one last comment. I know that other folks have an agenda that they feel are more superior, inclusive, and even maybe futuristic, whatever that means. That may be great, but I am convinced this community already has these qualities, and I kind of like it the way it is. But in these times, we need to refocus our resources on the taxes you pay and see to it that you get the services you have paid for. That, to me, seems to be the highest priority. So good night, and thanks for listening.
Thank you, Glenn. Who's next? Janet, who's next?
Jim Diaz.
Jim Diaz next.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And just so that all the speakers know, I've pulled up a timer on my iPhone. I'm going to put it in the camera view so that you can see what your time is. Okay, go ahead, Jim.
Okay, thank you. Again, I'm Jim Diaz. Oh, thank you. And it's been an honor and a privilege again to serve this community for the past eight years on the city council. It's been very rewarding, and I find it a very responsible and rewarding, again, position to be able to help direct the, and lead what's going on in the city of Clayton. My three priorities have been and always have been, first, public safety. I want to make sure that Clayton remains one of the safest in all of Contra Costa County, and it has. We have done the things that are right to make that happen, and we support that continued effort. Improving our quality of life is number two, through sound fiscal discipline and well-planned development. And as mentioned before, I am opposed to any large-scale developments, high-density, that would take away from our small-town environment. People have talked to me incessantly over the past couple of weeks. They like Clayton the way it is, and they want to continue to see it stay that way. Finally, I listen to people. As a result, that's why I'm communicating. Specifically, my goal is to listen and to be able to be their voice on the city council. I am deeply concerned about keeping our small-town feel for all, present and in the future. I will continue to help steer the city in an ever-ending pursuit of fiscal responsibility. Finally, I believe all citizens should have and know their rights, but at the same time, they need to understand their responsibilities as citizens. The best way to ensure that is through vigorous but civil discourse and in-person or on social media. I thank you. I look forward to serving for another four years. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. And next is Tuya?
Hi, good evening. So I'm Tuya Catalano. I'm currently serving my first term on the city council. Today, I want to talk a little bit about diversity, inclusion, and equality. You know, I've personally, I've been a U.S. citizen only about 15 years, but you can't tell that until I speak and when my accent becomes obvious. Being a white immigrant is not even remotely close to what racial minorities experience on so many levels, including assumptions based merely on skin color. As a female working in a somewhat male-dominated field, I've been involved in several groups and initiatives to advance women's rights in work-life. In that context, we always seek to have men be part of that process because women alone cannot achieve. cannot achieve greater boardroom representation, partnerships, or overall equality unless men also see the advantages diversity can provide. Clayton is not a racist town, but there is racism in Clayton, just like there's racism in every city. To address it, we all need to be at the table. I don't just support diversity, inclusion, and equality. Instead, I try to find ways to do something about it. Last November, I proposed that Clayton joined the United Against Hate Week. In May, I co-sponsored the Flying of the Rainbow Flag and the Celebration of June Bright Month. Last month, I introduced and drafted the resolution condemning racism in Clayton. And after June 5th, after hearing the stories of many of our Black neighbors at The Grove, as a community member, I was part of putting together the Clayton Speaks Group that has organized the Race Relations in Clayton webinar series, which attempts to start a meaningful dialogue about racism in Clayton. Doing something to be more inclusive does not just mean addressing only what impacts each of us personally. Just like we need men in order to advance women's rights, we need everyone to address inclusion and equality for all. This is not a political agenda. You either genuinely believe in equality for all, or you don't. You either do something about it, or you don't. Beyond all of this, the most important role in my life is being mom to two kids. Raising my own kids as kind, compassionate, and inclusive human beings is important to me. Part of that is living by example, standing up against hate, bigotry, and racism when you see it, and being part of finding and working towards solutions. Every Clayton resident should feel welcome, equally welcome, in our community regardless of their gender, race, sexual orientation, religion, or any other characteristic. I hope to have your vote in order to continue to provide fiscally responsible and inclusive leadership. Check out for more information at catalanoforclayton.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tuya. And next would be Peter Cloven, I believe.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, Peter, are you up yet? You don't see him yet. There he is. We got to get him unmuted. There you go, Peter. Okay, you're on.
Hi, I'm Peter Cloven, and I'm seeking your vote on November 3rd. See, I've been walking this town, getting to know our residents, and I've been amazed at the level of positivity and willingness for people to engage in conversations that are near and dear to their heart. When I ask them about their thoughts about our city and what it means, or their concerns, they say, "How do we conserve Clayton's character?" Now, I'm told that the character of Clayton runs much deeper than outward appearance. See, I'm a 14-year resident, and my family's history hails in comparison to some residents that have been here since the 60s and 70s. It's been great hearing from them about the positive changes Clayton has gone through. I've also been reminded that we've had some struggles, but the sky has never fallen, and we've become a stronger, more tolerant community that continues to love and respect our small-town values. The character of Clayton is rooted in our volunteerism. It's our community participation and interaction with our, and it's also the use of our downtown as our gathering place. It's who we are as a community of people that truly makes up our character. Now, the character of Clayton also lives in our CBCA sponsorships of festivals, the Clayton Community Church Soapbox Derby, the Kitty Parade on the Fourth of July, local pit masters competing in the Barbecue Cook-Off, and of course, Saturday Evening Concerts in The Grove. Now, we loved walking our trails, playing bocce, attending swim meets, and going to soccer games. But you know what? We also do the right thing, and we teach our children to be responsible, kind, respectful, courageous, self-disciplined individuals who live with integrity and are accepting of all people, no matter their race, color, creed, orientation, or economic status. See, our character also shows in getting passionately involved in our city government and its processes. We may have our differences, but we all love Clayton, and in our own ways, we want what's best for it. Sometimes, we make mistakes, but we correct them, just like we did on June 5th in the Beale Room rally downtown. Now, as your representative, I'm going to be fiercely independent and transparent. I'm going to work to find acceptable zoning options for the upcoming housing numbers, and I'm going to use my environmental expertise to analyze every project. And you know what? If there's a project that doesn't meet applicable standards, you bet I'm going to challenge those projects. I'm going to work hard for all of Clayton. You know why? Because I am you. I'm proud to be a Claytonian. My wife, Lisa, and I, we've been raising our daughters here, and I'm dedicated to conserving Clayton's character for our current and our future families. Now, tomorrow night, I'm having a town hall at 7:00 on September 16th. For more information, you can go to my website, clovenforclayton.com. That's cloven, the number four, clayton.com. I may be last on the ballot, but I'm first, and I love Clayton. I humbly ask for your support. Thanks.
Thank you, Peter. And I believe next would be Holly Tillman. Is that right, Janet?
Yes, that is correct.
Get her unmuted and live. There she is. Welcome, Holly. There you go.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, I'm Holly Tillman, and I've been a resident of Clayton for the last 17 years, when my husband Matt and I bought our house in 2003. I've been active in Clayton for the last 10 years on several different avenues. I was a volunteer at Mount Diablo Elementary School in several capacities, excuse me, also at St. Bonaventure, where my husband and I ran the track-and-field program for several years, and working currently on the CBCA as a secretary, and most recently, as a member of Clayton Speaks, that Tuya and Peter just alluded to. Tonight, I want to discuss my three pillars, which are community inclusivity and transparency. And I also want to discuss the four major areas of importance that I've learned from the residents as I've been walking around town, giving them my signs, and answering questions as they've had them. I also want you guys to hear my positions on all four of them. The first is traffic management and safety. This is always a concern, given we provide a shortcut for commuters. The installation of flashing signs near our schools will be a great addition, and I know that is currently in the works, although they have not been installed. I also think we should consider ways to slow drivers down near The Grove Park downtown. While dining at several businesses the past couple of weeks, I've witnessed drivers speeding down both center and main streets, and it's extremely dangerous. I would like to look into options to address these issues. Should I make it onto the council, and if I don't, then I plan to be there every week until something's done about it because it's very unsafe for the children. Number two, high-density housing. I'm neither pro nor anti-high-density housing. Just want to be sure everybody heard that. I'm neither pro nor anti-high-density housing. I have been asked several times what my votes on future projects will be, and I cannot tell anyone how I vote in the future without having seen the project proposal. I can tell you that once it's in front of me on the council, I will ensure that the developer and the community development director have worked together to address the residents' concerns. It's unfortunate that residents, including several running for a seat on this council, are already closed off on the idea of making additions to our city. I can only imagine how our city would have evolved if prior councils were not open to future development. Third, in regards to racism. Yes, Clayton does have racism. As Tuya said, every city does. We are not immune to it. But we do need to continue discussing it. We are perceived as a racist town. Those are not my words. Those are words from residents here in our city. Not only from the ones who currently live here, but from ones who grew up here and ones who grew up in neighboring cities. These discussions can be uncomfortable, and I'm okay with making people uncomfortable, if it helps us move the needle in terms of making our town be more inclusive. Police-community relations. I believe and respect and support the police, full stop. I do not support police brutality. There's a huge difference. We can continue the dialogue with Chief Warren, and we're already making great strides in that vein. Thanks, Julie.
Am I good to go?
You are good to go.
Good evening, my fellow Clayton citizens. Tonight, I want to talk to you about two of my key issues, money and politics, and actions versus catchphrases. As many of you know, I'm not taking any donations for my campaign. For our small town, I don't think it should be necessary to take money, especially money from outside of Clayton. Now, if the other candidates' friends around town want to throw a few dollars their way, that's no big deal. But that's not the case with Councilmember Catalano. The firm she's a partner at, a San Francisco-based law firm that helps housing developers, they financed most of her last campaign. Why would a large San Francisco-based real estate development law firm need one of its partners on a city council in a small town over 30 miles away? Folks, big law firms don't make political campaign contributions without expecting something in return. But the money trail goes further than that. It turns out Catalano has donated money to State Senator Scott Weiner on multiple occasions. The firm she works for has made several contributions to Weiner. Why is that important? Since 2016, Weiner has been working to pass legislation to remove local control, cram as much housing density as possible everywhere, and eliminate single-family zoning, which he thinks is immoral. Weiner thinks the vast majority of zoning in Clayton is immoral. So why would Catalano, our elected city representative, donate to his campaign to help him push these one-size-fits-all laws on the rest of us? Remember, he's not our state senator. He represents San Francisco. If he had his way, then anyone could bulldoze down the house next to yours and build an eight-plex, and our elected officials would all say, "Sorry, my hands are tied." Remember, Weiner thinks that the American dream of homeownership is immoral, and Catalano saw fit to give him money and help him achieve his goals. Now, I've spoken about actions versus catchphrases. Catalano says she is for local control, but her actions do not support this claim. For her, it's a catchphrase. In reality, she's supporting Scott Weiner, Sacramento's leading advocate for removing local control. When you donate to a candidate, it's a very strong endorsement of that candidate's agenda. When Catalano raises a specter of bankruptcy or state laws forcing Clayton to do the things our residents don't want, that's because people she supported like Weiner passed those very laws. Her law firm, according to its own website, represents developers just like the one who is pushing Olivia. Regardless of what she says in her actions, Catalano has worked to make that possible. Now, let's contrast that against my actions. In addition to not taking any money for my campaign, I will donate my city council paycheck, just as I have with my Planning Commission paycheck. I would never give money to a politician who is working to destroy my community, and if I did, in the name of transparency, I would have let the good citizens of Clayton know before I ran for office. The citizens of Clayton deserve to see these facts for themselves. All the documents showing Catalano's campaign finances and her donations are on my website, frankforclayton.com. Clayton can do better than elect someone who says they're for local control but whose actions clearly prove they are not. We must do better, and that's why I, Frank Gavidia, am running for city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. All right. So now we are on to the rest of public comment. We have 50 attendees in our audience, and if there are anyone else in our audience who wishes to speak on under public comment about any item that is not listed on tonight's agenda that is under the jurisdiction of the Clayton City Council, the first one up would be Scott Denzlo. And if you want to speak, line up with your hands raised, please, or if you're on the phone, dial *9. Get Scott in here. There he is. Unmute him.
Okay, can y'all hear me?
We can, Scott. Go ahead.
Awesome. I don't know how I keep getting in first on all of these meetings. It's amazing to me. But thank you for your time, guys. And Jeff, I just wanted to say I am in complete agreement with what you guys were talking about before the meeting. We need to find a way to make this Zoom thing work going forward, whether it's special legislation or finding a way around the Brown Act or work with the Brown Act man. I'm with you 100% on that. We're getting way more engagement in the community, and we got to find a way to get this done if we can. Excuse me. Also wanted to briefly touch base on what both Tuya and CW mentioned regarding the, excuse me, regarding the Clayton Speaks Race Relations webinar series. If anyone hasn't seen it yet, with the kids leading the way in the last one, that was super powerful, and it's great to hear what the future of Clayton kind of has to say on some of these topics. On another note, just wanted to say I'm really excited. We're in the middle of election season right now, and I wanted to thank all of the candidates for putting their time, their effort, their energies, their passion into running the campaigns. Shows how much they care about their town, especially in these challenging times. Say, my only concern is that after hearing all the statements, we heard one candidate choose to attack another candidate. I kind of don't know where that came from, but you know, we all kind of saw that. But I appreciate the positive dialogue that we had tonight. We had a lot of people talking about a lot of positive things, and I really do appreciate all the hard work that all of the candidates are doing for their city, the city that we all love. So anyway, on that note, like I said, smack dab in the middle of the election season, and I know our buddy Peter Cloven, who we heard from earlier, has a town hall tomorrow night, so I wanted to help him get the word out on that. I know Holly has another one or has one coming up at some point. I don't know the exact date. I apologize, Holly, but I wanted to get the word out on that, too. If any other candidates have things coming out soon, you know, I'll be happy to get the word out for you. All about engagement over here. So sorry to take up two minutes of your time. I won't take up three. And next up, please. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Scott. And next up is Dee Viera. There she is with her rainbow mask, and she's unmuted. Dee, you're ready to go.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you, council. I would like to take a moment to share an experience I had this month. I was thinking on the campaign slogan given by candidate Frank Gavidia, "Keep Clayton Clayton." The word "keep" means to have or retain possession of. Clayton belongs to all of us, not just some. I was confused by what the slogan meant, so I thought I would reach out to Frank on his candidate website and ask him. I have never commented on his website before, so I asked him politely, "What does 'keep Clayton Clayton' mean?" And that I didn't want to misunderstand its meaning. His response to me was no response, and instead deleted my comment, and then disabled my ability to comment on his page further. That may be his prerogative to do, but was that the best way to address my question to him? He has a statement page that details a plan to unite Clayton and end the divide. In his statement, he says, "It begins with a commitment to be respectful of everyone and each of our different perspectives. This means being willing to engage anyone at any time." He also said, "There are going to be times when I may not agree with someone on a given issue, but I will be respectful and address any question and explain why I have taken the position or vote. Well, I am that person with a different perspective, but why wasn't I given the courtesy that Mr. Gavidia promises on his statement? I have to admit, I was taken back how I was treated by Mr. Gavidia. Maybe a better way he could have handled the situation would have been to say, 'Thank you for your question.' I am planning to write another statement explaining what my slogan, "Keep Clayton Clayton," means. This would have been a more respectful way to address my question. I don't think Mr. Gavidia realizes this slogan holds different meanings for other members in our community. Did Mr. Gavidia consider what the slogan means to all of us? Did he consider that a gay or a Black person might not see that slogan very welcoming? Did he consider that the parents of a gay or Black child might not see that slogan very welcoming? Given our current state of our country and the mistreatment of our people of color and the LGBT community, I would think he would have been more sensitive to the entire Clayton community. So I think, Mr. Gavidia, you should think a bit more how to unite Clayton and end the divide. How will you bridge the gap with those of us with different perspectives and keep us engaged with you? Certainly, a delete and abort approach would not be the best way to unite us. I would like to remind Mr. Gavidia, there are many like-minded people in this community just like me. Just because you don't hear from them all doesn't mean they aren't listening. I encourage you to be better at engaging the entire community and not just to your base and the issues that only concern you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. The next speaker is Dan Hummer. Get Dan unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Dan. Go right ahead.
Yeah, my screen dropped down there. It was kind of odd. Anyways, I actually don't have any comments in regards to anybody as far as the city council, but except for just thanking everybody for running. I know that's a, that's kind of a hot topic. We have a lot of hot topics this go-around, and thanks for everybody's input and for running and adding some, adding a lot of diversity. Mike, actually, I have a question in regards to the resolution for the LEAP grant, and just wanted to make sure. I know that it was already, you know, it was already voted on and everything like that, and it looks like the resolution would be going forward. I just wanted to make sure, and I did send a note over to some of the council members last evening in regards to our, I know that it's a grant, but are there any obligations, and are we aware of any of the obligations or things that we need to? And are we aware of any of the obligations or things that we need to do in order, you know, as far as, okay, so here's $65,000. You need to basically, you know, are we aware of all the obligations for receiving that money? That's mainly my concern. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. I don't see any other hands raised. One last call. Anyone else wanting to make public comments? Seeing no other hands go up, we will close the public comment period. And we will go on to our next item on the agenda. We have no public hearings this evening. We have two action items, the first of which is a suggestion that is being brought forward primarily by Councilmember Wolf and the Do the Right Thing Committee, which I believe includes Councilmember Butea Catalano as well with regard to race relations. And CW, you want to give us an overview of what it is you're proposing?
Yes, you know, the Do the Right Thing is ten years old now. It began in July of 2010 in conjunction with the principals and parent clubs at Mount Diablo Elementary, Diablo Middle, Diablo View Middle School, and Clayton Valley now Charter High School. And also has CBCA leadership with the Clayton Police Department and other community members. And it's been a great success over the last ten years. And it was absolutely themed correctly, in my opinion, for its time. However, given the climate that we're living in today, I think it's necessary for us to review the pillars of Do the Right Thing because we want to strengthen its foundation. And I think it's something that we should do on an ongoing basis anyway. As times change, I think that these pillars may change, or at least additions may be added here. And that's what I'm talking about. I would like to have the council consider the word, the pillar, inclusion be added to these character pillars. I was thinking about sometime in the May-June-July timeframe in there with Cinco de Mayo happening in May. June is officially deemed Pride Month in the city of Clayton. We also have Juneteenth Day in June. And then Independence Day, of course, in July. All these things are surrounding the word inclusion. And what the timeframe is, we can decide that. But I would suggest that we move courage to be the pillar for August. Responsibility then would be the pillar in September. And the rest of the initiative would remain intact, as is with schools leading the way in choosing not only the values that support the pillar, but also the recipient, the award recipients. You know, there's some misinformation or misconception out there that Do the Right Thing is an adult program and has to do with the city. And the reality is, it's about kids. And, you know, it has to do with our schools, and they're going to be the ones that are going to come down and decide how this is all going to be implemented, much like they do now with the current program. But inclusion can be be a friend, listen without judgment, understanding differences. Those are the things I think that our kids really do understand today. And they're going to be the leaders of the future. And I think that awarding our students for being enlightened and being more inclusionary brings our community toward that goal. And so we should recognize our students for inclusion. And that's what I want to bring forward. And also, I would like to, hopefully, I'm not out of order with this since it's in the agenda packet, but I wanted to also have the council consider Do the Right Thing because it's the right thing to do as our city motto, although it says "moto" in here. It's actually motto. And I think that would be great to have an official city motto of Do the Right Thing. And by the way, just to cap on that as far as Do the Right Thing, C.S. Lewis, President John Adams, Oprah, many, many people have written this saying in many different ways over the years. But "character is doing what's right even when no one is watching." And that's what Do the Right Thing is all about. And that's why I wanted to put a seventh pillar of inclusion into Do the Right Thing.
Thanks, CW. Questions of CW? Other additional comments? Butea?
I just want to offer, I'm sure we'll have some public comment perhaps, too. But I really just want to thank Councilmember Wolf for introducing this. I think this is an excellent idea, you know. And as he mentioned, it is primarily a program that's run by the schools. And although we, as a council, we only see about two to three students per school for each of the trades, you know, the program is actually quite a bit wider and greater than that. For example, at the middle school, for every trade, they actually pick approximately fifteen or twenty students for each of those trades, and it's only two or three of them that are then brought onto the council for a meeting. Both of my kids have at times received the recognition for responsibility. And I think as a parent, like so many other parents whose kids have been recognized under this program, you know, it's important, and it raises up good dinner conversations in your family. So excellent idea. I also want to thank, going back ten years, former mayor and councilmember Hank Stratford, who was the one who initially proposed this program together with some community members. Excellent idea. So I, you know, we'll talk more after public comment, but I definitely really liked the city motto idea. I like including it in our letterhead and overall very supportive of seeing a seventh trait for inclusion.
By the way, we did hear from former mayor Stratford, and he's in support of this, although he has some different ideas with regard to the different months and when that should be. But nevertheless, he's in support of this.
Okay. Any other comments?
Is the motto part of this as well? I didn't see it in the...
It's in the packet, but it wasn't in my...
It's a little bit lower, right, in the packet? But the actual resolution doesn't mention it?
Correct. It's an addition that I was hoping you would all consider. I guess we could bring it up at another time, but I just thought if you would consider it, this would be an addition to that. I believe it's the last sentence here of the resolution or the packet.
Where does it get included if it's a motto? Do we have a motto right now?
No. And we would put it on the city letterhead under the city of Clayton mountain under here or on your emails. And there were some examples that we sent out in the packet as well.
As a footer, perhaps?
Pardon me?
Yeah, I wasn't clear.
On the station.
Yeah, I wasn't clear on what we were talking. Because like, on the letterhead, you know, it has the mountain that is founded in eighteen whatever and incorporated in 1964. I can't see it because my copy is all fuzzy. So would it replace that or append to that?
No, it would just go underneath that.
Or it could go as a footer on the bottom of the page, as you have illustrated in several different ways. One of them, it's a single line, which allows you to cram more into the page of your text. One option is to put a logo in there somewhere or for us to be able to use the logo and the motto along with our signatures on some of our official correspondence.
Or even behind Fran's head right now. It would be, you would say, "Do the thing," because the right would be...
Do the thing. Cool.
Would you like us to also pick, you know, like, for example, if we adopt this tonight, you know, you had several samples for the letterhead. Would you like us to then pick sort of which way to represent it?
Are you asking me?
That's micromanagement, personally.
That's...
I like the three-line version, attachment C.
I like it, too.
I like the one-line version, so...
Yeah, I would support the one-line version. And by the way, just after all the wordsmithing for the proclamation for the Hispanic Heritage Month, we did insert the word in the area regarding Clayton as being an inclusive city, which was a really nice addition. And so this stands or comes right in line with this, as well as I appreciate CW thinking about the month of May and the ongoing months beyond that.
Yeah, you know, I would think that maybe it would be best to assign the months based on working with the schools on what they think would be the easiest for them to work with. I'm not particular. I like your idea of May-June, early July as the inclusion. But, you know, we have several other traits as well. And I will raise an issue, and we will take public comment in just a minute. So if you want to speak on this, go ahead and raise your hand and get in line. I received, I think we all received, an email from a resident today suggesting that this was unnecessary. And I thought, you know, we established the Do the Right Thing program with the six traits that are already there. I mean, honesty, responsibility, integrity, courage, self-discipline, respect. You know, we've got all of these things in there, and that doesn't imply in any way that we aren't those things. What it implies and says right out loud is these are things we value in our community. And so it's not an accusatory thing to list these traits. It's an aspirational thing. And so I was kind of surprised when we got a comment from a resident that thought it was a horrible idea. And so I just want to say, I think it's a wonderful idea. And over time, we might think of other things we need to include. But I think adding inclusion says a lot of things. And I think it's a really, really good idea. I think the artwork can be worked on. We've got more than one graphic artist around who could probably do that for us in a heartbeat. And I think we've also got some good choices here that are listed that the staff might be able to use any one of those formats, depending on how long the letter is and whether they need to cram it on one page. So I'm totally in favor of this. So any other comments? I do see we have one hand raised. That is by Keith Hayden. Okay. Keith, you are unmuted. You have three minutes.
Okay, I believe I'm unmuted.
Yes, you are.
Okay, good.
I'm in front of my camera.
All right. Well, thank you again, CW, for proposing this. I think it's very timely. And you heard kind of the background of the program from CW and Butea and Julie. I was part of the original team that worked on the design of the program after Hank had proposed it. And it was really identified as a way to exemplify what a good citizen looks like and what is worthy of reinforcing and recognizing in our local schools because so much education occurs at that level. And these were going to be then models for good students and citizens. So the idea was that we would start with these six traits and that in the future, additional traits could be suggested and added as the program was implemented and then evolved over the years. And it does seem to be very timely and appropriate to add a new trait of inclusion in light of current concerns that illustrate the value and recognition of this trait and that it's grown over the years in the Clayton community. And efforts in support of that trait should be recognized and reinforced in our local schools and community. So I think this just reinforces the value of the program just by adding another concept to be considered when we want to recognize these types of traits being visible and practiced by students in their schools. I also like the idea of adopting the phrase "Do the Right Thing" as a city motto. I think it further reinforces our focus on modeling the traits of good citizens. And it's a great way to start our students thinking about serving their community and moving on from that. You do have the program logo that's on display beneath the council table at all of our council meetings. So it's pretty much been adopted by the city and reinforced at every city council meeting. Remember the meetings that we could actually hold live that was reinforced when people attended the meeting? So it's just a furtherance of that idea being part of our community. So I certainly support this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. And our next speaker would be Scott Denzlo.
Hey, guys. Can you hear me?
Scott, you're unmuted. There you go.
Thank you, guys. I just wanted to reinforce what former mayor Hayden was saying about Councilmember Wolf. CW, I really appreciate you taking the lead on this, as well as on the LGBT issue earlier in the year. You've really stood out as a leader in the community recently on these issues. And I just wanted to let you know that it's appreciated over here. All the six values that are mentioned are things that we truly value or claim to value as a community. And it's hard for me to imagine why anybody would not want to include inclusion, so to speak. It's a wonderful idea. I believe it represents, you know, what we should be advertising on Clayton Road, but more importantly, what we should be abiding by. So that's all. Thanks for your time, guys.
Thanks, Scott. Any other public comment? I don't see any. I don't see any other hands raised. Did we have any others that you can see, Janet? I don't see any others.
No, it's near from me.
Okay. Very good. Then we'll close the public comment period on this.
Let the stands go on the high note.
All right. So we'll bring it back to the council. What is the will of the council? CW, did you have a motion you were getting ready to make?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to adopt inclusion as one of the pillars of Do the Right Thing. And also, do I need to also put the city motto in this, or is that a separate thing?
I think you've mentioned it in your staff report. I think you can get there. Mala, is that okay?
I was just looking at the staff report. It looks like the recommendation was to have a resolution adopted. So did you want to make that motion to direct a resolution be brought forward for approval?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, okay, CW, you get to write one now.
Oh, great. I'll ask Laura for help. She helped me a great deal on this because otherwise, everything would have been spelled wrong like I did with motto.
I would love to second that.
Okay, so we'll approve the concept, and you'll bring the resolution back maybe at our next meeting.
Okay.
Wait, so we don't? There's no resolution now?
We don't have one written yet. We're directing it.
I mean, you can wing it.
What you might do is take the original resolution and modify that one to add...
Correct. That would be the intent, I believe, because the rest of it will be intact anyway.
Right. I think we could probably approve that, couldn't we, Mala? To use the original resolution that's in our packet?
We could. The one comment I have is the agenda didn't actually reference the motto. The staff report referenced the motto. So while I do think you could do the inclusion as part of the Do the Right Thing program, I think the motto needs to come back.
That can come back at the next meeting along with the resolution.
That was why I thought that might be a good way to handle both of them.
How about that?
Good.
Okay, so we have a motion to direct, to you, to go out and write a resolution and bring the both items back on our next agenda.
No, no, she said it right. She said it right.
Just for clarification on the motion, do you want the resolution to include the city adoption of the motto? Or do you want a separate resolution for the...
Let's do that as two separate items, just so it's really clear.
Thank you. Staff will be happy to assist you, CW, so we'll hope...
Thank you.
An editable copy of the original resolution. Somebody wants to email me the thing. I might be able to run it through a OCR program that I have and get most of it out of there unless we have it in a Word document somewhere. It would be lovely if it's back there in a Word document, even if it's ten years old. Okay, so I don't... Okay, so I don't see any public comment on this anymore. We did take public comment. Janet, would you please call the role on the motion?
Absolutely. Councilmember Cavallano?
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Aye.
And Mayor Pierre?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, our next action item is to consider the option to designate a city council voting delegate and alternate delegate to the League of California Cities 2020 Virtual Annual Conference to be held October 7th through the 9th, which is after our next meeting, and determine a city voting position, if any, on the One League Conference General Resolution. So Janet, you want to give us an overview quickly?
Yes, sure. Thank you, Mayor Pierre, and city council members. And before you this evening, there's the opportunity to designate a voting delegate and or alternate voting delegate for the League of California Cities Virtual Annual Conference due to COVID-19 pandemic. This year's conference is being held virtually, October 7th through 9th. On October 9th, a voting delegate or alternative will have the opportunity to vote on the one resolution that was released on August 21st, 2020. League bylaws provide each city entitlement to one vote matters affecting municipal or league policy. Conference registration is required for the voting delegate and or alternative. If it is decided to have a voting delegate, funds will need to be expended. The conference registration is $50 per person, as this is a virtual conference this year. The fiscal year 2021 budget adopted June 30th, 2020 approved a budget of $1,700. City council assignments adopted December 17th, 2019 designated Councilmember Diaz as the primary representative and Councilmember Cavallano as the alternative on the League of California Cities East Bay Division. Councilmember Diaz has already expressed interest in attending this year's virtual League of California Cities conference. And the voting delegate form is due to League of California Cities no later than Wednesday, September 30th, 2020, and concludes my report.
Okay, and so that is a decision we need to make on who our voting delegate is. And then potentially any position on the resolution. Did you all see the resolution? In your pocket?
Yes. So can I ask Councilmember Diaz what his he indicated he was interested in joining? So what what is his position on the resolution?
I don't understand your question. I'm planning on attending it and via the virtual system and I'm available.
No, 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 the question is.
How you would vote?
A resolution on the agenda to be voted upon at the business meeting.
How would you vote? Councilmember Diaz, I was hoping you could answer how you would vote on that item?
Or how you recommend we?
I would hear. I would. I would want input from the council and I am not going to do it by myself.
Do you have a recommendation? Yeah, do you have a recommendation?
I don't. Do you have a recommendation?
I do.
Yeah, I do too. Jeff, why don't you go ahead and give us your take on this? And and maybe while you're doing that, give us an overview of what the resolution is actually asking us to do.
Sure, I'm gonna butcher it, but I'm gonna do it from memory.
I can do it right here if you want.
No, no, I I I wanna. I'll do it, fine.
Okay.
This is in regards to taking a position on a modification of the Communications and Decency Act of 1996. It is specifically geared towards section 203 or is it 230? One of those. 230. Okay, specifically in regards to section 230. This is the provision of the Communications and Decency Act, one of the few and key provisions that hasn't been struck down by the courts because this act was bad. This one is the one that protects online content. People who host user-generated content online, if I say that correctly. So places like YouTube, Amazon, Etsy. Basically, anywhere that allows user comment, user rating, user input. And it essentially says that if that the content provider or that the host of these websites or whatever you want to call it forums, let's say, that the host is not responsible for the actions or the words that are said by users as they generate. Of course, for things like copyright protection on YouTube, it it does provide a mechanism for owners of copyright to assert their rights. And then if the if the host is notified, then they have an obligation to take action. But if they're not notified, they cannot be held liable for anything that user posts. And this this rule essentially has really fostered the growth of the Internet itself. It's a key provision that allows speech on the Internet. And I think, you know, the the league, I believe, is taking a position that this is a bad thing. One of the the law specifically is about or the sorry, the the resolution is specifically about making content hosts liable for people advocating for illegal acts. I think it may be even more narrow than that. But what I would say is that is a slippery slope. And I think that those that advocate illegal acts, you know, content providers can also they can track users if they want to. But to the extent that this is a slippery slope that is really attacks what is the heart of the Internet is free communication. I would not want those avenues of communication closed off by content hosts for fear of litigation because someone may assert that there's illegal activity going on. I think that is a bad avenue to go. The Electronic Frontier Foundation, the EFA, they are the essentially the leading advocates for free speech on the Internet. They've taken a strong position that would oppose this type of change in legislation. And I would agree with them as well. So I think that's a summary and my position.
Okay, let me let me just clarify a little and read the title of the resolution because I think that makes it just a little bit clearer. It's a resolution of the General Assembly of the League of California Cities calling for an amendment of section 230 of the Communications Decency Act of 1996 to require social media companies to remove materials which promote criminal activities. So you know, there it is a slippery slope and they can't possibly monitor every single post, but certainly when made aware of of people using their sites for promoting criminal activities, it would require them to remove those posts. So comments from the council and we will then open it up for public comment after that. Toya?
So so let me add on to that a little bit more. So there's actually three sort of whereas clauses in in the proposed resolution that, you know, it tells exactly what that vote would be for or against. And it says that online platforms must establish and implement a reasonable program to identify and take down content with solicits criminal activity. And online platforms must provide to law enforcement information which will assist in the identification and apprehension of persons who use the services of the platform to solicit and to engage in criminal activity. And an online platform that willfully or negligently fails to either in either of these duties is not immune from enforcement of state and local laws which impose criminal or civil liability for such failure. The question I have, and I don't know the answer to this, are they defining what criminal activity is? And I don't know if any of you saw that anywhere in the packet.
I did not. Mala, do we see anything other than that generic criminal activity phrase?
I didn't see it either. I can double check, but I think it was just generic.
And it basically says they're not immune from civil liability for promoting criminal activities. That doesn't say that the police are going to go after them. It says they can be liable for civil.
Yeah, and so I think the position that I that I most subscribe to is essentially a speech, free speech absolutist. And you know, what the EFF and others have said is that if this or something like this comes to pass, the most likely outcome is that they would eliminate this manner of they would eliminate or severely curtail the ability of users to post content. I think that's bad overall, so.
Well, I think it's pretty clear that some of the companies have taken this on themselves to remove content that they thought was not in the best interests of the online community.
Oh, yeah, and I think that's certainly within the purview of those those private entities. You know, they can remove whatever they want. Their rules, they have their rules. I I think that when we start talking about what the government is going to do, then I think that the government should not be doing that. If if private content hosts, they can do whatever they want. So I think that's a clear separation in activity. So that's where I would come.
Do we actually need a delegate for this?
We don't even have to vote on it, no.
I mean, we didn't. I know last time, I think it was a matter of cost that we didn't. We wound up.
Yeah, we didn't. We didn't do it before because of the travel, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think last time the only resolution had to do with like Southern California, so it wasn't even relevant to us. But this is a statewide issue. And I think, you know, I think this question has been. It's been discussed not only in our state but in other states as well. And, you know, I think reasonable people can disagree if 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 the idea that it's strictly limited to illegal activity. You know, illegal, it's not illegal to talk about illegal activity, even though it's probably not advisable and and really silly if you're if you're going to engage in it. But, you know, I I do think that it's a pretty slippery slope. And anytime that, you know, there are laws that encroach on speech, I think people should not do that.
Absolutely.
And I think where this came from, looking at the information from the city of Cerritos, this was prompted because they had some rioting and looting. And the the word about the activity was spread online and they're looking for somebody to or for the ability, I think, to hold somebody liable for that spreading of the word. And, you know, whether it was Paul Revere or, you know, somebody shouting from the rooftops, we society always finds a way to get the word out one way or another, whether it's online or something else. So I I'm not sure that this actually gets us anywhere. Certainly, I'm not a fan of seeing people propagate violence online. And hopefully, when it's found, the the host will take it down. But I'm I'm not sure that this gets us to any better place. Other ideas?
So, yeah, I would say, Jim, you you were designated as the league representative at the beginning of the year. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
Partly because Jim serves on the Safety Committee, which is probably, I think I saw on the agenda, going to be meeting one of the days.
Right. That is correct.
Yeah, but that's, you know, it's online, so we can all go to any of the classes we want to.
Absolutely. And that's and that's the reason why I think it's imperative that all members speak in on this thing because obviously we're all members of the league, no matter whether who's designated or not.
So if you if you are our league designee and you have an interest in going and you want to vote, I I would throw my weight to say vote no, but I I'd leave it to the others to share how they would like.
No, and that's what I I was hope that that would that would take place is that we get a consensus opinion from the council and then you know, designate me or whoever is the the designated representative to to, you know, communicate that.
I think that meeting's what 11 o'clock on Friday or something like that. Is am I remembering that right from the start, Jim? Something like that.
Possibly, yeah.
What was the cost?
Yeah.
Was it costing?
Fifty bucks and you can attend any of the sessions you want.
Right.
And I would say, you know, anybody that's got the time to be able to drop in on a few of those.
Absolutely. It's 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 one of the better organizations and they I've actually attended in the past, the actual meeting, and it's very worthwhile.
Yeah, I don't know that the business meeting this time is going to be worth a whole lot. But they they generally aren't unless there's some really juicy something like we're fighting to get our money back from Sacramento or something like that. You know, I've been in some of those fights as well. It turned into to rallies, basically. But, yeah, this one is probably going to be pretty boring. So thanks, Jim, for volunteering to sit through it.
So what do we need? What do we need to decide on that? Jim is going to go and vote no?
First question, should we set? First question is the two questions presented. First question is, should we designate someone to go? We pay the money. Second question is, if we do that, should we select or recommend or take a position and ask our representatives to take that position?
And convey that position to the to the full league?
Right. And this also will include whatever other resolutions come up through the process over the next month or so. There it's kind of a high bar to to get something on the agenda at the last minute, but it's been done before. So we would have to have, you know, trust that Jim would make the right decision on any of those as well.
Yeah, yeah, and I would if there was something controversial, obviously, or something that would affect us, that I would bring it back before before the meeting.
Yeah, because we would we would know about that before our first meeting in October, whatever would be.
Correct.
They would have to have it ready and on the agenda before that. So we'd be able to.
That is. That is. That is true.
Yeah. So I think I'm hearing a general consensus to have Jim be our voting rep. Who would like to be the alternate? Toya, do you have the time on that Friday morning to be the alternate?
I'm actually that week is pretty busy. Hold on.
Okay.
Yeah, I have some, yeah.
Okay, CW, how about you on the night?
Yep, I think I'm fine.
Okay, so you want to be the alternate?
I will.
Okay. And then our direction.
And just just to be clear, do I only attend if Jim can't do it?
Yeah, you would only vote if if Jim doesn't want. Janet, if she performs with both of you on it.
Yeah, no, CW, you can attend any any and all.
Okay, good. That's really. That was my question, really. I'm sorry.
Well, oh, and maybe this is, is this related enough, Mala, that we can ask that we all be all those who want to be registered for the league courses and and meetings, even though Jim will be the delegate at the business meeting and CW will be alternate the business meeting? Can we then recommend that all council members who desire to can be signed up for the rest of the league conference?
I I'm just thinking that's probably within the city manager's authority since it's just $50 and a attendee. In the past, obviously, it's been a big expense with travel and whatnot. So I I think the city manager could cover that within the budget, I'm guessing.
But I'd recommend if there's some, take a look at the agenda and if even there's one class on there, it might be worth you dropping in if you can.
Do they limit the size of the classes?
No.
There is a limit on registration. So we will see. There's not an un. They don't allow unlimited registrants. But there won't be a limit on most likely attendees to each class. I mean, if you're in person, there is because of building constraints, but I haven't seen them want to limit these individual webinars.
Thank you.
So we'll resend the link to you again and and invite you to let Janet know whether you'd like to attend and then she'll take care of registration for you.
Yeah, and I think they're getting closer to firming up their agenda too for when the classes will be and and that sort of thing. So we can all make our own decisions based on our calendars. Okay, very good. Do we need a vote for that, Mala?
Janet, did they want a formal resolution or approval? Do you know?
Yes, please.
Well, that was. Wait, is this the resolution just for the designee or is this off of the position?
That's like for the voting delegate and the alternate.
Yeah, and then we've just given direction for the for the voting. Yeah, and then we've just given direction for the, for the voting.
There's no resolution in front of us.
No.
It's just for the form.
It's for the form.
Okay. Okay. Did, did, I, I didn't hear what you guys thought on that. So I didn't know if you had any input or are you good with what I said, or, I don't know. I heard, Julie, I think I heard you a little bit saying that you didn't think that this really does anything or is that effective. I didn't, I didn't know what you, the other, the other folks thought.
Yeah, I, I don't think it really gets us anywhere. It's, 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 it's one of those things that the word gets out one way or another, and just attacking social media is not going to solve the problem. And anybody that makes threats is, I think, liable anyway. It shouldn't be on the host of the social media to, to try to enforce it. I'm sure if the chief saw somebody threatening violence on social media, she could pursue it without having to go after the social media company.
I, I would hope so. Did you guys, are you all cool, cool with that? Because I didn't hear you say anything, so I don't know if I, I didn't want to talk over you guys.
I'm personally, I'm a little uncomfortable, maybe just a lawyer in me, but the fact that the, the criminal activity is not defined, it don't-
Yes, it is very ambiguous.
Okay.
So what will you do? Wait for it to be defined?
Very clean. No, you don't even try to define it. I mean, they've, they've put forward their resolution and we don't think it rises to the bar, then we vote no. Is that what I'm hearing? Or just from me?
They can always try it again with further clarifications and whatnot.
Yeah, I, I mean, I mean, a no is a no. I think it's, it's just terrible all around, but that's fine. Like even if it were defined really well, I think it's just ripe for abuse and I would, I would just say, no, don't do that.
Well, I mean, and I think the idea of, you know, not allowing solicitation of criminal, criminal activity is fine. But like I said, I think the, the, my uncomfortableness is within the, the language itself and the lack of definition here and what exactly that means.
So it's a no? That's what I heard.
I think that's what we heard.
Stop it, no.
All right, so do I have a motion to that effect?
Don't move.
I'll move it. Second.
Okay, motion by CW, second by Jeff. All in favor, Janet, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cavallano?
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Aye.
And Mayor Pierce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our regular agenda. The last item is council items limited to requests and directives for future meetings. Any requests for future meetings?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss the note, I think, that we all got from the representative from the city of Torrance.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They had asked us to adopt, I mean, I want to get the language right, sorry.
Just kind of reset it again, didn't they?
Yeah.
And we got another follow-up today.
We got it just today.
What's that?
We got it again today.
They just followed it up again today.
Yeah, it was, it was originally sent, I believe, on the 9th, but they, they sent a follow-up today. So it had to do with the resolution about preserving local control. And I, I want to, I think that resolution was basically packaged for us already. So I'd like to discuss that and see, see about moving on that.
I'm surprised they didn't work to get that on the agenda for the league.
It, it seems more, less super organized than it could be. But, you know, the resolution is there. It was one that was passed by, I guess, the city of Lawndale in August. So that, that's, so if we could discuss that, that'd be great.
All right. We'll see where we can fit that in on the future agenda. Okay, anything else? If not, then we will recess. We will not adjourn. We will recess back into closed session. Uh-oh, where'd my paper go? For the second of our two items, which is conference with the labor negotiator under Government Code Section 54957.6. Our labor negotiator is our interim city manager. And we have two employee organizations, our miscellaneous city employees and our Police Officers Association represented group. So we will recess now, go back into closed session. And let's meet there at, what time is it? At 9 o'clock, okay? I gave you a couple of minutes to go get a cookie and stretch and move and all of that. And we'll see you over there at 9 o'clock. And then move back to this meeting to report out after we're done. Hey, Janet, are you out there? I am. Wake up. I am here. All right, get us back on the record. Alrighty, let me just do this. All right. All right, we have just come out of closed session with a conference with our labor negotiator for our miscellaneous employees and our Police Officers Association. And we have no reportable action. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you all. We'll see you next time.
Thank you.